Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 25th, 2020 School Committee Meeting here at Tinsborough High School. I will remind everyone that these meetings are audio and video recorded. I would like to thank members of FinCom for being here this evening, and we'll go through introductions. I will start. Usually I start with Ms. Fairbanks, but...
I am not Ms. Fairbanks.
Oh, you're not.
My name is Rob Mullen.
Good evening, Julie Vasucci.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Thunrell.
Paul Mitchell.
Becky Stanton.
Joe Messina, School Business Administrator.
Good evening, Bill Bushman. Thank you for inviting us.
Good evening, Carl Brock.
Good evening, Billy Crawford, Finance Committee.
If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman McMahon had something come up. He's unable to make it, so he wanted to apologize to you guys for not being here, but thank you all for being here. Hopefully, Mr. McMahon will feel better. Approval of minutes. I seek a motion to approve the February 10th, 2020 Negotiation Subcommittee Minutes, the February 3rd, 2020 Negotiation Subcommittee Minutes, the February 4th, 2020 Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee Minutes. February 4th, 2020 School Committee Minutes, the February 4th, 2020 Executive Session Minutes, not to be released at this time.
Make that motion.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 00. Correspondents?
I'm the Chair. Thank you. I received an email today from Brian Lynch, who was our liaison with the MSBA and School Building Committee, and it notes that the MSBA would like the town to change their target July 13th, 2020, as the review time for the OPM for the construction project. For those of you at home listening, as you know, two weeks ago, the town was invited into the MSBA pipeline. Our next step is to go through the module tool of the process and to secure an OPM. So there are a series of deliverables, and as we've talked about all along, the MSBA process is very prescriptive. So we have to have a draft OPM to the MSBA by April 23rd, 2024 review. So that being said, I'll be reaching out to the School Building Committee tomorrow with all this information, all the target dates, all the deadlines, and I actually have a meeting tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock with Assistant Town Administrator Justin Salzbeck, who'll be responsible for putting the RFS together, our request for service. So we're excited about where we are in the process, and it looks like that hopefully July 13th this summer we'll get approval of our OPM, which will then enable us to hire a design architect firm and begin to really formulate that feasibility study. So that's exciting news on the horizon.
Dr. Flanagan, what's an OPM?
Owner's Project Manager.
A what?
An Owner's Project Manager. So they work specifically for the town and the schools, for the town, because it's a town project, and they are a liaison between everything the MSBA has and the town, and they advocate for us, and they're, it's a versed individual who fully understands design, architecture, as well as MSBA construction processes. So the MSBA will actually give us a list of certified OPMs that they've approved.
I didn't know, so maybe others didn't know either.
Yep, no, it's a great question. So that information is there, and as always, all this information will be on the Tinsborough School Building Committee website, so if anyone at home wants to apply for more information, please visit our website. So exciting times.
And at this time, we don't have a scheduled meeting for the School Building Committee?
Correct. We were waiting to find out what our timelines were, so that's what all the community...
They will put that...
So we should for something probably mid-March.
Perfect. Thank you. Visitors' comments and questions? Let's see, none. I see KJ is not here this evening, so we will skip the Share the Success.
But there are a lot of successes in the Tinsborough Public Schools, so it's not that we don't have successes, we just don't have our student...
Colleen, Representative Garrett, Gary spoke one last evening.
She did. She spoke about the middle school theater production, what a great production it was.
Subcommittee update, Negotiation Council 93 will be meeting tomorrow evening. That's really about it. So all is going well. Personnel?
We have two personnel items. We have a request for paternity leave for Mrs. Hamilton at THS, and two requests for paternity leave, Mr. Leiden and Mr. Nagworthy, THS and TMS, respectively. Information over here.
And then the Tinsborough Public Schools Fiscal Year 21 Initial Budget.
So we'll get ready for our presentation right now. Dr. Branko can bring that up, we appreciate it. So thank you to the Finance Committee for being here. As always, I'd like to thank our administrative team for being here as well. A lot of time, effort, and work went into this, as you can imagine, so we're going to present some information to you tonight, and the hope would be that we get some school committee action at the end of this to recommend initial budget to bring forward to the Board of Selectment, certainly answer any question you have, and all the backup information will be online available tomorrow. So we'll go to the first slide. As we start typically every year, our focus as administrative team collectively is to achieve our vision, and we have three big rocks that we call strategic objectives. We need to make sure that we meet the needs of all of our students, we want to provide a rigorous and consistent program, and we want to improve the professional practice in our district at all times. That's what drives our work. That is the crux of what we do. So every dollar that we're looking for is to support this vision statement and to support our strategic objectives. Next slide, please. So beginning in December, the administrative team came together, and we started looking at what do we need, what resources do we need to develop a budget that's appropriate for our kids? But before we even started building level, there were several items identified in Central Office that need to be addressed. So at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Messina to kind of walk through the slide and outline some of these anticipated expenses and revenues for this upcoming year.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So the basic build of our budget begins with the salary rollover, what it's going to take to take the current salary, the current salary of current employees and bring that into next year. That estimated rollover for next year is some $486,000. Utilities, looking at our natural gas, our electricity, and sewer and telephones, all in that. Back in FY19, we look to be averaging about $20,000 less for utilities, so that's actually a savings that we anticipate for next year. Out-of-district tuitions, these are the students that we do send out. Looking at the current roster, that's about an increase of $135,000. Town Hall chargebacks, these are the chargebacks to our tuition-based programs. We collect tuitions, certain staff that are in those tuition-based programs. That looks to be about a reduction of some $27,000 based upon the population that we have working in that program. DBUS, we're in an option year for our bus contract. That projects out to be a $39,000 increase for next year. DBUS actually was scheduled to bill us $377 per bus per day. I did ask them to please take a look at that. We're always stretching every dollar the best we can, and DBUS, always willing to be a good partner, actually reduced that down to 37250 per day. That could have been a much larger hit, but still, it's about a $39,000 hit into next year. For revenue, we look at our revenue. We always present a balanced revenue-to-expense budget when we roll it out. We have some other revenue generating accounts. Grants look to be slightly increased. Tuitions, the largest of that $53,000 is the tuition we now gain from hosting an exchange program. That estimates to be about $45,000 available for next year. School choice, this is basically our reserve account, always trying to keep a year of earnings in that for anything that may come up that's unexpected. We do not anticipate having as large an amount that we would have had in June of last year, so that's about a $72,000 reduction. Medicaid that the voters give to us at town meeting. We use a three-year average of revenues. Last year's revenue actually dropped off pretty substantially, so taking a three-year average, we anticipate seeing about an $18,000 reduction in that. And then the Valley Collaborative Credit. Every year, Valley Collaborative is responsible for looking at what they have in their reserve and giving back funds to the member districts. We anticipated, when we balanced this year's budget, to be about $100,000 would be getting back from Valley Collaborative. We only got back $32,000. So $68,000 hole in this year's operation, certainly in discussion with the superintendent, we didn't want to carry that larger number into next year, so not completely sure of what they may give us, we are using this year's number of $32,000. So that got us to an increase at that moment of $653,324.
So we'll go to the next slide. So before we even start talking about what the needs of this individual buildings are, we're at a $653,000 increase. So the next slide. One of the things we talked about, and it actually came up last night, were the increased costs for out-of-district placement, and I just wanted to highlight some statistics here for you. You can see, and you recall, last year, we had a significant jump in our 365-day tuitions by some close to $600,000. You can see that that's gone down by about $30,000, or projected to go down by about $30,000 for next year. But the top set of bullets and the bottom set of bullets are there to highlight the fact that what we forecast in January seems to come to fruition during the actual school year. So we project that we'll have approximately 23 students out of district, 24 students out of district next year. So if we go to the next slide mark. So now we talk to the building principals, and we ask them to come together, and they're cognizant that there's not a lot of money, but we still have needs. How do we address those needs? What is a top priority in your district? We have a laundry list of wants, but we have to focus on what our needs are. So in a lot of conversation, and we hashed it all together, this is what we came up with, our preliminary request to add to the $650,000. We know, in terms of staffing, there are four critical positions that we need in the district for next year. We need an additional school psychologist on this campus, on our street campus, to assist with testing, to assist with the social emotional needs of our middle school and high school students. That has been something that we've discussed as a committee for probably three years. We know additionally that we need a computer science teacher. The state has changed expectations for graduation, changed the Common Core, and computer literacy and digital literacy and computer science are now graduation requirement. We have one computer science teacher on this campus servicing grades six through 12. That needs to go up so that our kids can meet graduation requirements. We've invested a significant amount of money over the past two and a half years at the elementary school to revamp our math program. It would be foolish for us to invest that money and then let the program fall. It was suggested from the time we got on board with this math consultant that we need a math coach. Coaches, coaches in elementary schools and middle schools are a common practice everywhere in the Commonwealth. We don't have any in the district, not one. So we are prioritizing this math coach to sustain the month we gain with that math work at TES, and that's a foundational skill, mathematics, so they need that to succeed at every grade level from there on. Additionally, at the elementary school, we have a diverse learning population, and we know that there is a significant need for additional special ed teacher down at the elementary school. That being said, we prioritize those four positions. Other financial considerations, last year, to achieve the budget we have, we reduced our teaching and learning line item by $25,000. We're looking to replenish half of that this year. Additionally, as we've moved to BYOD at the high school, one-to-one session at the middle school, tech and Chromebook throughout the science program at the elementary school, we have a need to increase our carbon emissions budget by some $20,000 because the Chromebooks have a three-year life expectancy. So we need to do that as well. So those requests right there total $268,000. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see $268,000 on top of the $673,000 earlier. Puts us at over $900,000. We know that $900,000 is not a reasonable request for our community. So, Mark, just go to the next slide. Historically, the town's allocated 2.9, 2.5, 9, 2.68% for the past couple of years. Our current budget's $29,75,000. So what the school committee was tasked with was, how do you want us to move forward? How do you want us to proceed? Do you want us to look at a 2% boost, 2.5%, 3%? So we put some numbers out there for you to see. This committee said, we know, we know, we said at the original kickoff meeting in January, that the town wanted an FTE-neutral budget in every department. That's the message loud and clear. So we had to strive to achieve that. This budget shows a growth of four FTE. We have to come in neutral. So let's move on. So how do we get there? So we looked at, the first thing was, for the teaching and learning cycle and the hardware replacement cycle, we looked at the supplies material line item at every one of our schools, and we took about 10% from each school to achieve that 32.5. So we're going to handle that internally with the assumption that the more technology you have, the less consumables you need. So $12,500 will go back to replenishing the teaching and learning cycle, and $20,000 will go to the Chromebook hardware replacement cycle. Additionally, we are currently, right now, we have preschool registration tomorrow. We have kindergarten registration coming up next week. Thank you. Last week, high school kids did course registration. High school schedules will be solidified another month or so. Given our trends, given our population, given our numbers, we're going to analyze and assess what our class size is throughout the district, and we're going to find four new positions in the district that we're going to reduce to accommodate the four new positions we need. I can't tell you exactly what those are right now because I don't know. Again, we're going to let the student schedules and enrollment inside of the registration dictate where we go for class size and make some staffing decisions. So if we were to make these adjustments in the budget, that would reduce the budget by some $257,000. So if you go to the next slide, you can see now that the request comes down to $664,000. Again, $664,000 is a 3.3% increase. We go back to being fiscally responsible, we go back to understanding the needs of our community and say, we cannot present a 3.3% increase to this community. We don't have the money. We understand that, we know that. So what else can we do to tighten the belt? So if we go to the next slide, we have Mr. Messina run through the steps we've taken to reduce that budget further. Initial budget requests.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So one of the things we always try to do is we try to keep the current year's receipts of school choice intact in order to bring that forward into the next fiscal year. The number you saw in the previous slide for school choice, that was based upon the balance we think we'll have at the end of June this year. In order to balance down this budget, similar to last year's budget, we're going to use $50,000 of next year's receipts and place it against that $664,000 to reduce it down to some $614,000. Additionally, Mrs. Cavanagh at elementary school are looking at some of the preschool options, and we hope we'll see a tuition increase of $25,000 based upon some additional offerings and some ability to pick up some other funding there. Salary offsets, we've identified some staff that may be leaving, and we can replace at a reduced figure. That's probably some $61,000. Again, not set in stone, but we hope to be able to do that. Similar to that, out-of-district tuition, after we had presented the first phase of our budget to the school committee, Mrs. Lewinsek in our Special Education Office was in talks with two different schools about changing a placement on a student, and we hope that that placement will change, and that will save us some $40,000. So that gets us down to $488,450.
Which is a 2.36% increase over last year's budget. So I recognize we just threw a ton of information at you, but the next step would be to answer any questions, so. Mr. Messina has all his backup information right there. I'm happy to answer the question.
Yes, good. I'll start. What would be your total budget number for this year?
Would be $21,213,900.
Great. I haven't seen, we haven't seen the total town budget rolled up yet either. I know it's hopefully coming so we can actually see some of that and where we actually are as a town. Couple of questions. On the salary rollover, I'm assuming from listening, Local 93 is the only one whose contract may be coming up, but the other contracts are settled?
Okay, good. I know the out-of-district tuitions are a killer. Don't have to tell me. I do have a concern with the circuit breaker increase and whether the state's actually going to come through with it. From the numbers I saw on the cherry sheets, I'm really not confident. So this is actually, again, similar to school choice, we always try to keep the current receipts to be available for next year's budget, realizing that circuit break is very volatile, based upon the funding of the state, based upon the population of the school. This number that we're using for the circuit breaker increase down below that is actually based upon this year's receipts. So it's not relying upon any potential Student Opportunity Act funding that may or may not come in. It doesn't rely upon the state funding it at 75% like they're supposed to. We will have that discussion about that funding this time next year as we roll out fiscal year 22's budget. But I think it was 2008 was the year that we were always utilizing the same year's revenues, trying to predict what the revenues are going to be. At that time, and you may recall, Bert, that we had significant layoffs in October of 2008 because that didn't work. The school choice funding was much less than what was in the budget. Circuit breaker, again, they were reimbursing at 55%, not 75%, and we had a significant issue in October of 2008 that, at that time, I think we, you know, we understood in the superintendent's office and we brought to the school committee that we got to try to, again, build up the reserves for when the unknowns come by, build up school choice, build up circuit breakers, so that we're not relying upon the same year's revenues to cover the most expenses because there's just too much volatility in our costs.
And I think that's why you heard me last night really pressed for special education and transportation reimbursement. We're taking two gambles in this budget. By $50,000 of school choice money, it's not a gamble, but you could potentially create a structural deficit, but we're also gambling on $25,000 of tuition from pre-cat increase. So we're hoping that if we can get the special education reimbursement reimbursement, like we were told we're going to in the Student Opportunity Act, we can offset those riskier budget placeholders.
We might have to take out legit players and just tie them up in a room for a while until they agree to it. My hope is that, as I'm very skeptical, you know, I think, Joe, you've done a great job over the years, you know, on the budget, so I know, you know, what we see is very transparent and everything, but with the state, you never quite know what they're going to do, so I'm wary particularly with this year. You know, seeing Chapter 70 at 6 tenths of 1% for the full year doesn't really warm my heart any.
And then we heard last night, you know, we're getting $50,000 increase in Chapter 70. And I said to Joe, I said, that's all well and good. FY15, we got a $44,000 increase. FY15. So it's nothing significant. It's what we've gotten every year, $45,000 to $50,000, with the exception FY17, I don't know why, that's a anomaly, we get $97,000, but every other year, it's been $45,000 to $50,000. So this new Student Opportunity Act hasn't really yielded anything for us yet, particularly if the special education transportation reimbursement doesn't come in.
I think you heard me say that, didn't you, Dr. Flanagan?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a scam on us.
And you ran the numbers too, so...
It's a scam on communities like Tinsborough that we're in, in a fairly median, high-income community, 106,000 per household, median income, and they see that, and they say, we can take that from you to give it to the ones that only have 45 or 50 per household. And you can swear it any other fancy way you want. They looked at the demographics and they said, you have the money, we're taking it from you.
Yeah, that's why I can go back to... That's our only caveat to get that transportation reimbursement.
I mean, that's really what's happening in the big sucking sound that's Boston, whether it be transportation costs or whatever. Like I said last night, we're crowded, so let's build a casino.
Let's not. I see you out of my back window, why? Are you offensive?
What are we talking? Insanity, insanity. And so I don't know if they caught what I was explaining, where we need to encourage some of this population around the metropolitan area to go out to Fitchburg, Lemonster, Ethel, even the superhighway to Amherst. And if you build a transportation system, the housing will follow. All you have to go is go to Houston, Texas market and see what's happened over the last 30, 40 years. They build housing, they come. They build more roads, more housing. And we're not doing that. We're just hunkering down.
You know, I spent most of Saturday actually pulling all the numbers out of the DOR and DFC and then running them, and it was like, no, what I see really doesn't show much of anything, you know, and that really gave me concern, particularly going into last night's meeting, you know. So my hopes are there, but reality is a whole nother story.
And I'm not stopping. Tomorrow, I'm going to a transportation meeting alone, in just that regard, and I'm going to carry paper with me, to undertake with them, for what I'm talking about. It only makes sense. We had a train the other day that blew up and got on fire.
It's crazy, crazy. Will you be putting out a budget book like you had?
We'll put out a budget book.
You've made me addicted to these things. As a numbers person, I love these, yeah.
Definitely, definitely. The one thing that I would like to point out, and it's not obvious to everybody to look at it, but our contractual salary rollover is $486,240.
That's all contractual?
That's all contractual.
Did I put a question back?
486,240. What we're asking for is 488,450. That's an increase of $2,210.
What percent does that equal of your total income?
2.35.
Your total salaries?
2.35, something like that.
4%.
Okay, 486, how much of an increase is that? I mean...
It's our entire budget increase.
So you're ready for 100 questions and be the 101st question that I have. The number that I don't have.
About 2.35%. Because our budget's 2.36.
So without doing the math in my head, the total salary is $17,901,000 compared to $17,323,000. That's for 247.2 people, so... I get the drill, between 2.3 and 2.7.
Yeah, because part of this is not just the lateral, but the diagonal as they move up, you know, and stuff.
Basically, what's happening year over year, it's basically the trend, you generate a trend, like that amount of money, like that, you know. It's unfortunate because we haven't had much inflation and hard to give much more, you know.
It's also unfortunate because we're satisfying the needs of the school, not the wants. There are other programs, there are other positions, there are other things that we can introduce to our kids and our community.
But as a member of the Finance Committee, thank you for not getting everything you want.
Well, I think for the past, I think for the past four years, we've been as responsible as possible.
I was just speaking to someone about this, what the school committee has been doing, you've actually been being more responsible and stepping up, and that's what we're going to have to continue to do because a middle school comes at a certain price too. You have more responsibility on your part to keep costs down. It's not going to get better, it's going to get worse when you get a new building, okay, because of the numbers. No, I'm sure you're aware of that.
Depending on the project, though... Depending on the project though, if we go with a wing off the high school, it could actually reduce costs.
We don't know what project we're going to have yet, do we? That's why we have to have the OPM.
Correct. The feasibility study, yes.
And this looks like in fiscal year twenty-one, this is the same student, the, I'm sorry, tuition cost, three sixty-five day tuition cost student?
Yeah, the district? Yes.
It's not a class, a student, that's a group of students.
That's several students.
Twenty-four.
We have twenty-four students that need three hundred and six.
No, no, it's just a group, it's a group of students.
Okay.
I don't want to, I don't want to do too deeply identify kids. There are kids, we're going to provide them all the services they need. But it's more than one kid.
More than one kid that needs three sixty-five day tuition?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Yeah, no, you're right, we won't single out anyone. They need what they need.
And I can say from my years on the committee too, I think from superintendent chairman right through to Dr. Flanagan, it's been an effort to bring a lot of that back in-house to try to, you know, save on those out-of-district costs. I know that the district's been very conscious of that and very proactive in that regards too.
We have teachers that do a great job and everyone in our school is substantially separate programming. We keep as many kids in-house as we possibly can because it's better for them socially, academically, emotionally, and if we can meet their needs, we're going to do that. So the incredible teachers are dedicated to that.
I was speaking to the IT, the IT department in town. Schools and towns are joining into a computer system or some kind of a system, right, where we're linking to everything together and.
So we are in the middle of moving over to the munis accounting system.
Munis accounting system?
So that's, that's school and town.
Town and schools, we're using one system? Is there a cost?
We're currently using one system.
You're currently using one system?
Yes. Softwrite.
Okay. So you're just changing to a new system? So there's no savings involved with doing what we're doing?
No.
We're just changing?
Yes.
Suppliers or?
Right.
Oh, okay. All right, wasn't sure of that. Now, Bert did ask if I can continue. Bert asked for this number, this budget number. In the budget booklet that we had last year, it went to the bottom and said the town's share. Is this the town's share or what number is this that he gave us, Anthony?
So that, so that twenty-one million dollar figure, when we, when we look at the school committee budget, we try to explain that there's two components to that budget number. There's the chapter seventy money that the state sends directly to the town for education, and then the town share is basically just the plug figure from chapter seventy off of the current budget request. It's the town share.
Okay. Do you have that town share number?
I do.
And also, is the number you're going to give me net of what we're getting from Valley Collaborative?
Yes. So that current budget number of twenty-one million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred dollars includes a preliminary chapter seventy number as of the fourteenth of January of seven million, four fifty-eight, four two four. So the plug number for the projected town contribution off of that is thirteen million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
And that's all based on the foundation budget that the state sets. So chapter seventies are part of that and then the town makes up the.
You've educated me quite well. I remember Bert. This may be Bert's last meeting at one of these. Not running again.
I'll be on the middle school. Looking forward to that.
I don't think, you know, I won't steal all your thunder.
No.
I have one other request that we could, you maybe can email me or send it to me. I'd like a little more in-depth understanding of how the Valley Collaborative works, you know, how, what, what our arrangement is with them. Just a better understanding of that. And I'm not up to no good, but I do know that when we get into the middle school, that's going to become something, it's going to have to be explained because we have a building, why are we having another building? And you guys can think it any way you want, but that's going to come up. And I want to understand it.
No problem.
So maybe you can send me an email or something?
Sure.
I'd like to see, I think you may have my email.
I do, I do, yeah.
If you can, not tomorrow, but in fairly recent future.
Sure.
We haven't, already spoken to one person that brought it up. It's running for election.
Got it.
Okay?
I'm happy to walk you through it.
As a plan, as a finance committee member, I'm supposed to know everything.
Okay. So maybe could you just sit down and talk sometime too? That might be a lot easier.
Whatever you want. I'm retired.
I'll reach out to you.
I'm retired.
I'll reach out to you. I'll reach out to you.
I'll go, I find.
It's not, it's not in our budget.
Mr. Chair, are you seeking a motion tonight?
I am seeking a motion. So are you guys all set?
We are.
You guys good?
One question I want to ask. Dr. Flanagan, if you had additional funds, what would be, say, your top two items that you would want to throw in here? You know, I'm curious.
Every principal sitting behind you looking right at you right now.
I keep it in the back of my mind, you know, that, you know, I know there are needs, you know, throughout the entire system, but, you know, I'm curious if there's a prioritization of, you know, what.
So Dr. Flanagan, I'd like to interrupt the question. I think the most important thing, the top thing would be for everybody in the community to contact Senator Kennedy and Colleen Gary and say, please fund education better. Fund the bills, deliver the money to the communities who need it, as you expressed earlier, you know.
It's dire straits what we're actually asking for. So that's really what Dr. Flanagan would ask for, is everybody to participate in the democracy and go lobby their representatives, ask for money.
It would be nice to have more coaches in the district. It'd be nice to offer more languages for our kids at the high school. I would love to see some more support in our middle school for individualized instruction. There are a list of things that we could do, but literacy and math coaches, key to you. We should have that. You know, we should have more opportunities for our kids for electives and program at the high school as well. So there's a lot we could do.
We should have roads and bridges and public safety stuff too. And the, the funding that the state does with education just depletes that. The town of Tingsborough supports the community, but it supports it at a cost. You know, we, we could be paving roads with the money they're paying for education. And it's more important, in my opinion, to have the education and do those things. But until the state gets off their ass and gets funding. The communities like Tingsborough fairly, I don't, you know, thirty dollars per pupil increase in the last year's budget for, it's probably forty or fifty communities. The increase was two hundred and thirty million dollars in chapter seventy money. There's about a million students in the state. That's two hundred and thirty dollars per pupil average, and we get thirty. So someone else is getting a hell of a lot more, and it's not right.
You know, I agree.
We can argue a town meeting about, you know, the schools take all the money and do this and all those other things, but if, until we as a community stand up and tell the state that it's not right and get it straightened out, it's going to be the same thing. The same thing happened in Westford. They had an override and the money was supposed to go to teachers. And it went to the needs of the town because the town had the issues that they have to be able to support their town.
Just for the record, my vision of Tingsborough is not Westford.
It's not mine.
Okay, just so you know.
But it's, the fundings are the same.
I know, but that's not my vision of Tingsborough. Maybe you heard me talk about demographics. They're a twelve hundred per square mile their population has gone to. We're just under seven hundred. I like this better. Thank you very much.
I think as I said last, last night, when I first started back in ninety-four with the Melrose School Program was when Ed Reform came in. And I want to say a year into that, one of the people actually wrote the whole formula, had seminars. And what we learned was they basically took a lot of spreadsheet and tried to put it into the English language and it didn't work from day one. And they've tweaked it a couple of times since and it still does not work. And I think we see this, you know, in our community, thirty dollar increase per child is, just doesn't do it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the twenty-one million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred dollar budget presented by the administration of the Tingsborough Public Schools.
Actually, I think that's written. So. I'll seek a motion for the initial budget request of twenty-one million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred dollar, an increase of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, a two point three six percent for fiscal year twenty-one to bring before the board of selection.
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I carry six zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you, guys. All right, new business Student Opportunity Act overview?
Just a quick update for the school committee. In your drive, there are a couple supporting resources that you can take a look at. Commissioner Riley put together a short form overview related to the Student Opportunity Act, and he also put together a PowerPoint presentation that went out to districts. So I shared both of those in the drive with you. Couple of quick highlights are that the Student Opportunity Act requires districts to submit a three-year evidence-based plan to the DESE by April first of this school year. They have established a template for that to make it a little easier, but some of the requirements are that there are four student opportunity commitments, is what they're calling them, that we have to connect to when we put our plan together. And they are that we have intentional focus on student subgroups who are not achieving at the same level as their peers. We look at adopting, deepening or continuing evidence-based programming that we currently have at the district. We monitor the success that we currently have in reducing our gaps, and we continue the work that we do in the district to engage families, particularly those families representing particular subgroups that are struggling. In recognition, and we spoke about this last night at length as well as tonight, that over eighty percent of the new chapter seventy funds are going only to thirty-five districts in the state. They have put a two-tiered system together so that we are on a short form. So at least the expectation is it won't be heavy, heavy lifting for us as a district to put the form together and get our proposals in. And at this point in time, we'll be working with building level leaders to take a look at the suggested opportunities that the DESE is looking us to explore. In-house, just some of the things that we're currently doing, some of the work we've done in the district the past couple of years that we will probably look to connect with, is that we are looking at our English language education curriculum development right now and program updates. That number, as you know, continues to grow in our population. And Kate Wells is working on research-based curriculum for all of our L students, K-12. We've done a lot of progress monitoring grade five through eight with our NWA map assessments. So we'll be looking to see how we can implement that, probably at lower grade levels and maybe up at the freshman level as well. Our wind block at the elementary and the middle school is another way that we're meeting these a wide diverse amount of learners, so we're going to look at programming and materials and resources there as well. And ultimately, the last thing we're looking at is online courses and instructional partnerships, particularly for students at the middle school and the high school. A lot of us have been conversations about how we're hopeful that many, many more of our high school graduates over time in this community could have experienced at least one online course because that's the direction a lot of their upper education and business education is going. So those are some of the areas we're looking at, and we'll keep you updated by April first once we submit our.
Right, so we have to do, we have to do a level of community outreach, which we've already done and we continue to do. And we just need to bring that back, or this information back, the template back to this committee in March, probably on our March, our second March meeting, for your approval so that we can submit it by April first. So you'll be seeing the template, you'll be seeing the product of what we're talking about here at some point in March. And that's the Student Opportunity Act, that'll be you.
Thank you, Dr.
And we know that we got thirty dollars per student on that.
School committee calendar.
Mr. Chair, I put on the drive a proposed school committee calendar for the remainder of the year. We've seen a run into this problem every year that the first and third Tuesday, doesn't necessarily cut it all the time, given vacations, given town meetings, election days and whatnot. So I met with Joe today and we kind of went through the calendar. We believe that this calendar makes sense moving forward. So instead of meeting next Tuesday, if we push the meeting out to the tenth, if we could be on the tenth and twenty-fourth, those would be our two March meetings. Given the vacation in April, we think we'd be okay just moving to April seventh for a meeting. May gets tricky because May fifth, we certainly get back on track with a meeting. May twelfth is a town meeting, I'm sorry, May nineteenth is a town meeting, May twelfth is a town election day. We generally do election days. So if we could have me on the fifth and twenty-sixth, and then going back to one meeting a month in June, July, August, we pick those three days because it seemed to work for our calendars. I'm not sure if it works for the committee's calendars, but this seems to be the pattern that we've taken over the past couple of years. So I'm looking for your direction on this proposal. And I probably apologize, I sprained it on everyone, but hopefully you can have your calendars in your phone.
Well, I will seek a motion to approve the amended school committee calendar for this year.
Make that motion.
If everyone's good for it. Michael made the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Looks good to me. I don't think that this, not going to bother me after.
There may be a few dates that I missed that I'll keep the committee for.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposing? There is a part two to this though, is there not?
There is. Would you like to direct me to do something?
I would love you to direct the superintendent to develop a master meeting schedule for the two thousand, twenty, twenty-one school year to be approved at the May-June meeting and posted online.
Okay. So basically, it's illogical that we end up shuffling meetings every year. We know what our school calendar is, we know what the election dates are. Let's develop that calendar for May, nail it down and put it on our website instead of saying the first and third Tuesday. That will require some policy language adjustments because I know our policy says that we meet on those days. But to me, it just makes more sense if everyone knows going in, yeah, we're not changing schedules. So I will come back in May or June with a draft of what that will look like for next year.
And that also needs a vote?
In May or June.
In May or June. Finance. Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. For signing of bills, fourteen warrants were presented to the committee tonight. I have them all back approved. The list of warrant numbers, accounts and amounts are in the drive. Signing of payroll, none tonight, we'll go catch up at the next meeting. For the financial package for January, the three reports are in your drive, the school committee budget at the end of January, as well as the revolving account balances at the end of January and the student activity account listing for the end of January. And I will leave enrollment to you.
Elementary school, eight hundred and ten, middle school, three hundred and eighty-eight, high school, four hundred and fifty-four, out-of-district, the twenty-three, for a total of one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five students. Thank you, Mr. Messina. School committee discussion, Mr. Mullin.
I'm all set, thank you very much.
You all should have gotten an email from me about those school committee self-evaluation. And did everybody receive it?
Yes.
Okay. And I've gotten a little feedback tonight that it was a little confusing to follow. Anyone else have that similar feeling because we can change the format if it's difficult for people?
Yeah, I was going through it and I felt that, you know, it wasn't really a question. It was, you had to read through it to sort of figure out what they're trying to get at. You know, the basic question wasn't there.
Basically, how it's set up is there's four statements for each question, and the first statement is a practice you don't want to be doing. The second statement is, well, we do a little bit of the practice, but not a lot of it. The third statement is, we do a lot of that practice, but not fully. The fourth statement is, that's a practice you want to be doing. So if you, maybe if you read it that way, maybe it'll clear it up in your head, but it is, it's different. But it is, it's different. It's a different format. There's not a...
I guess my point was if the practice was that they're trying to evaluate was the first part of the question, in that question, it'd be easier to sort of, oh, yeah, we do that and just go to that, the fourth thing and get through it a lot faster. Whereas I think the format here, you have to read everything to sort of make sure you understand everything. Sort of bugs, it bugs me down.
Well, the second and third one are all the same throughout, all of them. So I cut and paste them, the second and third part of it. The first, so out of the four things, the first one's, again, not the practice you wanna do. The last one's the practice you wanna do, and the two are both, you know, a step, either direction. So, but we can, I don't know, maybe we'll just talk about it next meeting if people get a chance to look at it a little bit more.
I haven't really had a chance to go through it.
Yeah, it is long, and I do realize that there's twenty-six questions. But when I went through it, I felt like all of them were questions that were good. They were all good questions, so...
So Julie, you're asking that we submit our responses before next meeting?
I said, well, I said by the twenty-eighth, so by this Friday, that's what I read my stuff. So if you wanna go through it, again, if you find that it's very arduous, just email me. And if I get that response from everybody, I can do it. I can put a question, like Paul said, I can put the question on the top, and then the steps would be down below. So it would just make it a little bit clearer. So I guess I want your feedback by the twenty-eighth, either you complete your net or just give me your feedback. How does that sound?
Perfect. That's good.
Would you please resend it to me?
Didn't mean to hijack it earlier, but I was getting it just a little obvious on the point there. It's really participation by the community to understand what's going on with the budget. And I appreciated the finance committee being here. Fantastic. So enjoy the last few days of February.
I'm good, thank you. Mr. Messina?
I'm all set, thanks.
Just wanna reiterate, as far as the budget goes, the community's gotta get together and push the state. The unions have to do the same thing if they're gonna expect, you know, better paychecks and better services and things in these communities, these small communities, they're getting run over. They've been, happened on that for a while, so hopefully you can hear, get some progress on it. Thank you.
While we write you in, you can harp on the game.
I just say thank the finance committee for coming tonight. And as always, when we hit the initial budget meeting, it's important to recognize the near twenty years' experience and hard work that Mr. Messina puts into this and how confident I am every day with our budget, knowing that we have an expert two offices away. So, Joe, thank you for all your hard work with this. I really appreciate it.
Yes. I have nothing, but we do have a need, I do wanna thank the finance committee. I hope Ryan is feeling better.
You're hoping he's better too, sorry.
So, but we do have need for an executive session to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body as declared by the chair, we will only turn from executive session to adjourn our regular scheduled meeting. And this does require a roll call vote.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
Thank you and have a good night.